A lot of money when businesses are looking to locate, there's a lot of analysis that goes into it. And site selection is probably in, when you locate anything, site selection is probably one of the most critical pieces. And it's, it's the same here, but on a different scale and for a different level of importance. Site selection is what, it is the elephant in the room. And I think that that decision has to be made not on emotion, but on facts. And I, I think, you know, having that be done based on, you know, survey and, and people will make a dis- they'll, they'll vote based on an emotion, but who knows if that emotion is based on a fact, on a fact that's, that they're choosing on. You know, that they're making a decision. I mean, this, as I said in my notes to you, the site selection is a right versus right decision. The RES site has a lot of advantages and it, there's a lot of good things about the RES site. The existing site has a lot of advantages and it's, the tough decisions are always right versus right. The easy decisions are right versus wrong, but in this case, we have right versus right decisions to make. And, and you know my, my position on what the selection should be, but I mean, that's, you have the hard choice. It's, you have the right versus right decision to make and it's, it's not easy. I don't envy you.
But how do we, how do we communicate to people to get the information that we need to make that decision? That, you know, that's where we are right now. I think Pat Messler wanted to make a statement. Are we good with her?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Pat, did you?
And while she's coming up, we just lost our livestream. It came back, so hopefully the people who are watching are now on part two.
This isn't rocket science. I was just gonna say, there are tremendous numbers of citizens of Rockport who vote, who don't have computers, who are not particularly savvy. I know you don't agree with me, Rick. I talked to a lot of them when I went out canvassing door to door. I don't think this is gonna be the panacea you think it is, because how are you gonna tell people that they need to go online to do this? You're gonna send it to them? Do you have everybody's email address? I don't think this, I think-
No, I'm not suggesting doing it only that way. I think you, the, the way to do it is with a mailing and with a paper, a paper option.
Okay, well, if you mail it to a family where five people live in the house and they all vote, do they just fill out one questionnaire? Or do you ask all five of them to please fill out the questionnaire? Are you really trying to do a demographic study? Because if you are, you need to talk to individual voters and make sure that each one pays some attention to your questions and gives it due thought. And that's an awful hard thing to do.
Well, again, a, a survey could be a presaging of the vote, or it could be, tell us what concerns you. And at which point, it's a, it's an easier task for a family of five voting members to say, what concerns you, what concerns you, blah, blah, blah. So it's what we design-
Do they get five chances?
Again, there's no, there's no relative weight. If-
I thought you wanted to see the weight.
If, personally, and I'm the noisiest guy about, well, I used to be the noisiest guy about surveys on this, on this board.
Wait, who's the new one?
Let's let him continue.
It is more important to me to flesh out the concerns of people, which doesn't have a number value to it. You list it as concern. Oh, here it is. Here's the, here's the concern. Again, we got that concern done. And address each of those concerns. That's what I think bothers the disenfranchised. And we saw it in November's election, you know? A lot of us go, la di da, I think logically, I think the whole world thinks logically, wham, oh, I guess they don't. Because they feel disenfranchised, you know? And what I wanna do is I wanna turn around a quarter, a half of the people that will feel disenfranchised. Whichever the way, the way the vote comes out, whichever the way this board decides, we have to go ahead on a site. Now, that could be, we make the decision later than I think because we have charrettes upstairs that include two different designs. That's a reasonable way of going about it. It's expensive. But I want everybody to have a chance to have their issues addressed. And with that in mind, there's no weight to a vote. I mean, I don't think, I mean, you've watched us. You know, we're not particularly swayed by, by numbers, except that we need to pay attention to them. You know, so if, if it comes down to 50/50 again, what are we to do? What does our survey help us? This survey has helped us by identifying all of the criteria that we need to address so that people know that they were listened to. You know, it's, I think it's, it's that simple and I may be wrong-headed, but you wanna entertain that?
But you, part of her question is, is what happens when you have a household that has four or five members in it that are voters?
That's designed into the survey. We did it, we did it with the comp plan survey, you know, that was, so you design that as the header of the survey. You design that in, in the first section. Again, these are, these are mechanical-
Yeah, these are all like workshop questions that, that we should probably continue on down the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, you want to say something to-
All right, are we opening it back up for everyone?
You, you need to come up here because we do have the people at home that can't hear back there.
Listen, they are back on.
Okay.
In, in terms of the, just the, the way you set up the two things you were just talking about. If you do the survey and it comes back the way the room seems to come back, that you've got 45 and 40 and, or pretty close to a balanced scale on both sides. Do we feel, should we feel confident that you will make a decision even though you, the, the new survey hasn't given you a 60/20? Well, I mean, I mean-
Yeah, yeah, the, the question is, how much time and, and money do we waste making the decision?
Well, I mean, you, you know, you've, so at the first level, this is a sampling of, of our community. It's, at first, it seemed like it was, had voted for and was clearly one side. But this is telling us that it's not so clearly one side. It's pretty much even Steven in this room. If you do the survey, the survey may tell you that it's not even Steven, that in fact, when you go with internet access and mailers and everything else, that it's 60/20. And that would be great. It would help you feel, well, I know that majority of people want this other thing. But if the, if it comes back, that it's like this room, it's like, you know, very close. I haven't seen anybody express an opinion, one person express an opinion. I mean, you keep putting it off for somewhere else from, and, and Jeffrey, in terms of your piece, we do the survey and we, we list all the, you know, people list the things that they think are important issues to consider about the decision, to make the decision. But I mean, again, a lot of those issues have been surfaced by this group. And I'd really like to hear how you were, you think about, you know, if parking is clearly one of the issues, it's gonna come up in a survey and it's come up in this room. How do you, how do you rate parking? I mean, nobody's giving an opinion about it or really talking it through and saying, you know, accepting that parking, you know, you're the, you're the guys that are gonna vote, so are you, is parking, is parking-
Design of the survey.
Well, the survey is telling us what the issues are, right? One side of you saying, we just wanna know what the issues are, then we'll figure out how to evaluate those, you know, we'll answer all of those issues by getting specialists in or experts or whatever, but-
So, so then it comes down to the-
You already know a whole bunch of important issues, but you haven't been telling us anything about how you decide about it.
And as I say, I'm not gonna be disappointed if we decide not to do a survey because we already have a huge laundry list of, of things to, to take care of. So that comes with creating the commu-, the, the committee with knowledgeable people who go out and do legwork, come back, oh my God.
You know, we're gonna need to move on or we're gonna be right back in public comment for the next hour and a half.
Can I make one statement though, because this is not like, yay, yay, you're all right.
And we got Paul over here who hasn't even spoken yet tonight.
Okay.
Well, if you weren't, I guess we're gonna be public comment again.
Very quickly, sometimes a survey gives you sort of information of that sort, but I think if you did a concept design on both sites that was comparable in terms of usable space and how that site could be used, and it would have to be different, like Jeff says, for different sites. People like to see. They wanna see something. And they're gonna have much more, a stronger opinion and a, and a more likely compromise if they see something they like, as opposed to answering questions that you then go back and analyze. So I think doing, doing conceptual design, it may cost more, but you're gonna spend a lot of money doing surveys too and a lot of time doing that. And if Reed and Company have always, have already put in a lot of information about this community and our library needs, and yes, this doesn't work well for RES, they've put most of their time into the other site, but I would trust them to do a conceptual design. And if we're looking at how that whole seven acre plot might benefit the, the community in the future, an anchor building of a library on a corner of that site could really build that. So I, you have to think all these things, but I think seeing it makes a big difference.
So in your mind, the taxpayers' money, that would be, go, double, double tracking it that far along would be-
I wouldn't go so far, Jeff. I mean, people rejected the 14,000 square foot sort of institutional building that Scott Simon put forward. That was on the RES site. That was the first proposal, right? Some people rejected the recent one because they didn't like the design or the size of it. So you got, it's tit for tat in some way that neither, one didn't pass, now one didn't pass. So we all know at this point in time, cost is a consideration, how many square feet is a consideration, and location is the elephant in the room. So let's see what could be, just a conceptual design at each one that pulls back the one that's at Lime Rock in terms of size or, or appearance, and puts one on the table for people to look at at the RES site, but, and, and begin to see it. Because when you see it, it's a lot different than if I answer a survey, did you vote this? Yeah, oh, I did. Did you want this? Yeah, I did. And those kinds of things, a lot of people don't operate from that kind of verbiage anyway. But most of us can look at something and, oh gee, I like it or I don't like it, so.
Paul.
Paul Charbonneau. Okay, two brief things. One is, I really, you don't have to answer this now, but please do answer it for yourselves. What do you expect to learn from a survey that you don't already know, that you have not already heard? You'll just hear more of it. The other thing I wanna ask you to think about is, what kind of a precedent are we setting here in terms of town government? It's, every time there's a controversial issue that comes up, are we gonna go through this rigmarole every single time? Surveying the whole town before we put a warrant article? I mean, how they ever wrote the constitution without flip charts and computers back in the 17, whatever it was, is beyond me, okay? And if anybody wants to propose a constitutional amendment in this country, are we gonna survey the whole population first before they ever vote on it? I mean, it's getting to be a little, you know, and we're back to this thing about you guys. It's your responsibility to take the bull by the horns. People may be disenfranchised for a while. If they wanna remain disenfranchised and not go along with what the voters will have voted on, that'll have to be their choice. I suspect a lot of people will be good losers.
Thank you.
Hi, Brooke Keough. Just briefly, in regards to the survey. When I go to vote, I'm one person, generally, you know, show my ID, I get one ballot, I get one chance to vote. Just in your workshopping, how are you gonna make sure that someone like me doesn't fill out the survey 10 times to try to skew it? I'm not, I mean, most people in Rockport are honest, but I'm just saying, you know, it's not gonna be as clear as, as a vote where, you know, you get one chance and only one chance, so. And then on another note, in regards to communication, and this is completely out of left field, but, you know, I know my own neighbors are interested but aren't here. And, you know, I stopped by to see a couple of them today, just to let them know about tonight and invite them to come. They're still not here, but, and again, out of left field, might not even be ethical or legal. But, I mean, if there's ever like a newsletter you guys wanna put together, I'd be happy to print out 50 of them, my, you know, my own dime, and put them in my neighbors' mailboxes, just so that they know what's going on. Just today, our lives are complicated and busy, and even though people are interested, they don't always get informa- we're so inundated with information that sometimes seeing something random in your mailbox might actually get their attention, so that's all.
Again, for the board, that's real easy. It's discrete numbers and discrete ID numbers for, so you don't get multiple voting.
Let's, since we're really on the topic, let's move to the survey issue.
Jumping over location, timbly.
Paul made an excellent observation. What are we gonna learn that we don't already know?
Okay.
Except maybe-
I'm gonna play devil's advocate. People come up and say, those people who voted against it, they voted for this, that, and that. Those aren't the reasons those people are voting against it. That's the reason that that person voted against it. So do we know whether people thought it was ugly? We don't know that. You know, people are writing letters to us saying, make it look New England. What does New England mean? You know, all of these things, so as, as guidance, and, and I will defer to Emily and professionals, but as guidance, there is a lot to be gleaned prior in, in abstract counter to Ames, and Ames is absolutely right. Most people can't look at a description and have it visualized in their mind. However, you can ask them about particular things and it yields a database of information. Not that you have to rigidly follow that, but everyone presumes they know why, you know, if they voted for it, and they say, all those people that voted against it, they voted because it was too expensive. That's a specious comment because they don't know. We don't know. So, you know, it may be that after the survey, we don't even have to do all this hard work because they said, I voted for it because I was pissed off, or something like that. You address that, you're three quarters of the way home, so.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, if we ask people why they voted no, and if, there was a 50/50 vote. If, if of the people who voted no, 20% of the people who voted no say, I voted no because I wanna move to the RES site. And 80% say I voted no because it was too expensive. That's a piece of information that we don't have right now. And that would, that would be a very informative piece for us as we move forward. It's gathering information for us. I mean, we have to put, like I said, you folks make the ultimate decision, not us. But we have to put something before you that we think through our gathering of information has a reasonable chance of success. And I think that's why gathering the information, and as I say, I, I think whatever surveying we do has to be reasonably brief, not too involved, but just to try to gather the information about what the objections were of people, how strong do people feel about the One Lime Rock site? If they saw a beautiful building on the RES site, would they be swayed to go for that? Or for the, all the people who want the RES site, if they saw a beautiful building and if the parking issue were solved, for example, would they go for the, the One Lime Rock? I, I, we don't know that. You know, having that information, I think, would, would go a long way into guiding us into which way to go and to what proposal to put before the voters again.
Question is, what's a beautiful building?
Well, exactly.
Your, your vision is different from my vision, is different from Owen's vision? Owen, I'd love to have it marine colored and, and a quantity up, right?
No, but what you, what you find out from that though, is you find out how strong people's attachment is to a site, whatever site it is. Or how strong the attachment is, so I don't care about the site, what I really want is a good-looking, whatever good-looking building is. And I agree, everybody's gonna have a different opinion about that. But if we can gather the information about what are the factors that are the strongest opinion, and, and location obviously is one of them. We've had a lot of people speaking passionately about location tonight. But we've also had people spiking passionately about make it smaller, six to 7,000 square feet came up in many comments tonight. Maybe the six to 7,000 square foot number is, is enough to, to allow for a 70% passage of the One Lime Rock. I don't know. If we knew that, if we could gather the information and know that, then that gives us the information we need to feel fairly confident to put a warrant article forward with a new design on the One Lime Rock Street at six to 7,000 square feet. But-
No, no, please.
It's just 'cause my wife likes to watch this stuff. Ames, she agrees with you completely 100%, which means she's gonna be upset with what I'm about to say, which is, I would, I would, I believe that people elect us folks sitting up here to make these hard decisions for them. That's why they elected us, to do this job. And to sit there and go, it's my sense, it's my feeling, I've listened to a lot of different things, and here's what we should do, moving on now. I may be alone in that, and, and if we do the survey and, and go, I'm, I'm not gonna fight anyone on it. You all bring up very valid points that we would get very good information, and that's all great. But I feel like folks elected us here to make hard decisions and then get yelled at, and if you didn't like my decision, then you don't reelect me.
But-
Did you wanna make a comment? I saw a hand wave.
You mean quick, is that you talk?
Now, you have to start out by saying, I'll be brief.
I will be brief, I promise you. I'm Michael Thompson, and I'm new to Rockport a couple of years ago, live on Spear Street. But as a voter here, I didn't know any of the real information about what the library proposals were when I went to vote. And to me, that I think is probably one of the critical elements, if you're trying to get broad consensus one way or the other, is get the data out there, get the information to all the townspeople, all the registered voters, so we know what we are really voting on. I mean, I voted yes for it because I felt, yes, a new library is good because this one, I believe, can't be renovated. It's a ton of money, but, you know, for a couple million dollars, maybe something else will happen in the town and we won't have to worry about the taxes increasing too much or about one thing or another. But truly, getting the information out to all the people so we know what we are gonna be, what, what the pros and cons are of each option, you know, in advance, so we can analyze everything. You guys know the majority of all the pros and cons. You've heard, from what I'm learning, for months and months and years about one site versus another, the size requirements or the size, you know, recommendations. Let us know what all that information is so we can then make an informed decision. And I bet you will get a preponderance for one side or the other. And I don't know if a survey is actually gonna be necessary, because I do think, as somebody said earlier, you guys know the pros and cons of, of all the data, you know, so that would be my, my thing that would help me the most. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Sally.
Yeah, I would like to make one comment about the June vote. I, it may have had something to do with site, but I don't think that primarily it had, it reflected genuine voter decision about site. The select board recommended a vote against it be, based on the way it limited the site planning. The One Lime Rock Street had already been decided as the site for the library. The Rand firm thought that it was by far the best site. They thought it was a perfect site for the library. And there was no campaign promoting a vote for it because the site had been decided. Several select board members already said RES was off the table. The whole reason for the warrant in the first place was that a year after the November 14 vote, there was still a select board member who was holding out for RES. And the study about library size on the site was site agnostic. And no one was making it clear that there, possibly the vote against RES had been in favor of One Lime Rock. No one had been allowed to say specifically about One Lime Rock Street at that point. But I, I think the June vote really shouldn't be considered as a strong indication of site preference.
No, that was not my intent when I made that comment. It, it failed, it didn't, but it didn't say not on One Lime Rock. It just said, not exclusively on One Lime Rock.
Are you, you're looking for a vote tonight on whether we do a survey?
Well, if we don't take a vote tonight on doing a survey, we're gonna have to wait until January. We have no other meeting scheduled this month.
Okay, so whether we call it a survey or whether we not, I wanna, I wanna challenge, I wanna challenge one thing that was said here today. I wanna challenge a whole bunch of things, but I'm gonna pick on one, and I wanna use one as an example. The challenge is Mr. Charbonneau's comment that make decisions, who cares about disenfranchised voters, they'll come around. Seems to me with a little bit of effort, you can make it a much more pleasant place to live by, by taking into account the people who, taking into account everybody, parsing it out to the level that, that Michael said, so that people know what's happening, and then presenting a full, a full thing like that, a full show. Secondly, it's, I think one of the most important things we heard, and I don't remember if it was this evening or last time around, where Ames said, hey, originally I didn't like a, a brick building, and then I talked with, was that, was that you Ames that talked about? Oh, sorry.
Somebody said it tonight.
Somebody, somebody else said it tonight. I looked at my notes. I didn't like a brick building, but then I talked to the architect and they told me why. Pat, Pat said that. They told me why, that it was the best choice, you know, long-term maintenance, this, that, and the other thing. Those are the kind of things that one by one allow somebody to become less partisan and say, okay, at the polls, I'll be one of the 25% that doesn't vote for this, but I'm fine with that. I'm fine with the, the 75%. So that's where I wanna go. Whether we use a survey to do it, whether we just take notes or what have you, and take our notes and combine them into a, a pathway is, is not of significant concern to me at this point.
So I don't offer too much resistance. What's your timeline? Lay out to me a timeline that makes me not go, ah, six months more.
Because you'll have meetings after meetings after meetings, crunched?
No, just because I think that we, as a community, should move on, and I'm just, I am concerned about the, this lingering longer.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, I didn't write it down here, but I think Emily had mentioned that we could have it done and back-
Give it to three weeks.
You know, the first of March at the latest, you know.
Which coincides with the end of our listening tour.
Yeah.
Sort of, yeah.
And then we can, can we, can we set like a date where we'll actually vote on something, like definitively vote on something?
If we wanna have something on the ballot in June, we're gonna have to take a vote by the first of April, really.
We wanna have something on the ballot in June, we gotta have a survey back before the first of March. We gotta have it back by the end of January.
And if, and if we wanna pursue, you know, the suggestion of getting a couple of designs, you know, two designs for this one, two designs for that one, or one on one, that's gonna take a lot longer, and we're, we're looking beyond.
And that, and the design, you know, those, those designs are gonna, you know, they do cost money.
Yeah, I know that, which is why I asked whether two designs parallel all the way through to that process is, is important. Personally, I don't think, I don't think that that's money well spent. I, I think we, I, I agree with the people that say, that say, vote on the site first, but I don't agree with the, with the, you know, vote tomorrow. However, I'll, I'll yield. Go ahead.
I don't know, I was just, I'm still listening to you.
No, I'm, I've-
Oh, you've, you've loved it. Oh, okay.
Love, bless you.
Ken?
Yeah, where's our logical key at, Ken?
I think if we're gonna do a survey, getting it back by the first of March is too late. If, if we wanna, if we wanna keep June in our sights, and I think keeping June in our sights is, is a stretch at best for all we have to do. But, and, and it's too bad Emily's not here because maybe we could get some information on how quickly something could be put together and turned, turned around. Well, it's almost 10 o'clock. I wouldn't call her now.
Ah, they, they have fun.
Is that too much information?
And, but just something, and, and quite honestly, I, you know, if we're gonna do the survey, I, I wonder about the listening tour piece because I think we're gonna get these same people again. I, I don't know. I mean, if, if it can get more information to us, then I'm all for it, but I'm just not sure it is. I think the survey has a better chance of, of casting a wider net than a listening tour does.
Okay. So how, how weather- So how, how weathered are we to June versus November?
You're gonna be competing with a twenty-six million dollar school in November.
But that's.
Twenty-six plus.
Okay, so the, the flip side of that is, are we being disingenuous by trying to cramp, by trying to front-end load it and cram it? Because, I mean, people know that that's coming along, they, they know that.
People that have spoken, you know, on the thirtieth and again tonight, so we don't need a survey, we know what we, you know, we, it's like, well, you know what? We need to know, we can get it done, put it up there, others, of course, have said, no, you need to take your time.
No, I, I'm, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about us.
Yeah.
What do we, what do we think? Do we think that it will fail, everything else being equal, people love what we come up with, whatever that is. And do you think it's gonna fail in November but pass in June because of the other, other vote, I mean, people know that that money, that expenditure is coming.
Logically, when you, um, put one number by itself. Or you put one number attached with another number that makes an even bigger number, you're more apt to not vote for the bigger number than the smaller number.
But the.
Just saying.
Votek school, the votek school passed by over a thousand, almost a thousand votes, and that was a bigger number.
That's because that is an extremely needed thing, not that a library is not, that's not what I'm saying, but it's, it's a little bit of a different conversation.
I think there's something to be said for not letting it drag on too much longer, I think a lot of people wanna get the conversation going, and yes, it's gonna require. Us to meet a lot, and it's gonna require people to be really engaged for a time, but I think if we let it go through the summer again. We may start losing some, some interest, um, it's gonna be tight, it's, it's, it's a tough schedule to get it done in June.
We're, we are bumping up against, I think, voter fatigue over this question, that.
If we could get it settled in June, I think that would, from my opinion, that would be preferable. Do I think, if it's a good proposal, will it pass in June more easily than it'll pass in, I think if it's a good proposal, it passes either time. Uh, but I think there's some, I think we're hearing from people that they would like to, to see this drawn to a conclusion sooner rather than later.
Well, if we do go for a June vote, what are we presenting to them?
That's what I was gonna ask, could, could we?
We had a design this time, do we have time to be able to turn around another design, or really two designs?
Well, and I think.
People need, you know, I like to see what I'm voting on.
Some of, some of these questions about when to vote on it may be answered by whatever response we get from whatever market research, I'll use market research rather than the survey.
Thank you.
Whatever we do, and, and if we can get that information in by the end of January. That may give us a very clear answer to where we have to go for a proposal for a warrant article.
Let me point out that there was, first of all, there was only three words of discussion about, uh, regionally, regionate school. And of them, not a single one was about designing the building, nothing, nothing about size, nothing about anything, people were convinced we needed it. Okay, people in Rockport were convinced we needed, even though Rockport and Camden take this huge hit that we don't use with, it's, you know, it's a twenty-five-year-old thing. That didn't even come up for discussion, they said, okay. They didn't say, okay, in the library, I don't think, yes, for a whole bunch of them, it was the cost of the library and their preconceived notion of what a Rockport library should cost. But I don't think there's any difference in their mind if they're looking at that and, and something else at the same time. For one thing, as you say, the big thing is the shocking one, oh, well, criminy, if I just voted for this monstrous thing here, oh, the library, that'll do, you know. We'll, we'll include that in the basket, but, um. Do you think that we could put a resolution to build a library without a, a drawing in June, in the June election?
Yeah, we could.
Do you think it'd pass? Do you think it'd pass?
That's a different question, it depends on what we're putting out there. You know, if, if it's, if it's a simple que, you know, thing about, well, it'll be between six and seven thousand square feet, and it'll cost between. Two point five and three point five million, and it might be at RES, or it might be at.
Well, no, 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 I.
That's gone down.
No, 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 if, if it, if it doesn't say the site, but if it said X amount of square feet. Uh, if it said generally this, could you sell, could you, would people vote for it without a drawing?
I don't think so.
Can't do an estimate without a drawing.
Yeah.
You need, you need to know.
Is it gonna, you know, is it two stories, is it one story, you know, what's the cost of maintaining it, if we put clavards on to make it look more New England?
In, in theory, you could also just put a number out there and then design around a number, it's not the best way of doing things.
But that's essentially what I'm saying.
It's another of the various options we're debating right now.
I think the voters would feel like they were, they were losing their ability to, to have a, a part in the design.
And, and I wouldn't disagree with that, so, so, still June?
I don't know, I think we have to do the market research.
As, as an initial goal.
I think it's, I think we should not throw it, we should not push it off the table at this point. I mean, if the market research comes back and tells us clearly that the major reason that people voted no on this one was size and cost, rather than site. Then we have a, a clear way to move forward.
Okay, let's take it that we are gonna do market research. Do we want to contract with Emily? She, you know, she said she will do it pretty much pro bono, but we've gotta cover all of her expenses.
She's, she would, we wouldn't need to contract her, with her, she would do it for us for pro bono.
Okay.
What we would be paying for would be for the mailings and the postage of doing that stuff.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a contract with her, um, and I, I think to do, to do that. She's gonna have to work, um, over the holiday, so it's ready to get into people's mailboxes so they can get back. There, I think there are two, two paths, depending on how this turns out. I mean, if, if it comes back that the, the primary reason was size and cost, and, you know, may, maybe the way it appeared. You could turn that around, Dick, Reed and Company could, they, they have all the information, they've done all of the work, they, you know, they, they. I shouldn't say they, we've done a huge amount of work, and so they could turn that around pretty quickly on the existing site. The challenge is going to another site, going to the other site, is in order to do that site, it's a different, it's a different plan, they'd have to come up with different work. And that site, as you heard Brink and Maisy say, is, if it was gonna go to that site. It can't be that we just plunked the library down in the prime real estate of the site. So there's gotta be a lot of work done on the, a master plan of that site, so that's, that pushes us way back past November. You know, it pushes us into the next year, and the question is, do, you know, you're, you're, you're really talking about, you know, a, a year, year and a half or two years away. Um, and if that, if, if site is the is, is the issue, then you're really looking at about two years from now. Uh, before you could really have something to put back before the voters, or, I mean, you could.
To do it very, very responsibly.
To do it responsibly, you could just say, we're gonna plunk it down in the middle, we don't care about master plan in the site. You could do that, I would advise against it, you know, I, I would say that if you're gonna do it, you, you, we should think about. Long and hard, master planning, get, if, if the decision is to move it there, master plan and get the most value out of that lot by moving it there, you know.
We can't make that decision until we get market research.
Right, or you, you can make the decision, you're not gonna go there. Whenever, but if you, if you're, if you expect the market research to answer that question for you. Um, that will determine how long this process takes, I, I believe.
So, I think the thing that's not on the agenda, and that is just as important, is the help we need to make our decision. Be it site, be it whatever, and for that, as I outlined in my wordy, uh, statement. We should have a group of people who do this all the time, help us with this. Simultaneous to all these other efforts.
Do you want a new ad hoc library advising committee?
I do, I wanna treat them differently than we did the other one, I don't want them at arms length, I want them, I, I want them integrated into our efforts. But. Master site plan on an underutilized parcel aside, all those other questions. Have a bunch of technical aspects to them, and much like, you know, I don't like bricks, ooh, now I like bricks.
Although she said she liked the bricks.
She would accept, she would accept bricks, you understand why they made that decision.
She understands why they're there.
I, I might've been a little bit ahead of you on that one. Again, I'm, I'm back to sort of citizens' relations, a group like that would help us with that, a group like that would help facilitate. The conversations with the architect, be it Reed and Reader, or Reed and Company, or another one. Um, and, and I think it behooves us to start that process now, the same as we're starting other processes.
I'm not sure about that myself, I'm, just because I don't know what the market research is gonna tell us, and I think the market research will inform us on how we have to move forward. If the market research tells us that we should stay with the One Lime Rock Street in a smaller building, a lot of that work is already done. So I'm, I just.
So.
I guess I'm not quite ready to, to make that jump to another committee yet, that's just me.
If, if, if we, if the market research says smaller number. Who is it that holds the interim? Six or seven or eight hour-long conversations with the, with the architects, how about this, back and forth and back and forth, Ben, everybody else?
At this point, I think it needs to be us.
Yeah, I think so too.
I, I mean, if that's what it is.
Trying to create another committee and bringing them in and bringing them up to speed, and then trying to get a product back from them.
Ah, ah, not from them, they're with us, they're with us in the room.
Then why have them here?
Because of their expertise, because we are not architects.
Who are we looking for?
When we meet with the architect, you can invite anyone you want to, and they can sit in the audience and advise us.
All right, I'll, I'll circulate.
If, but if the, you know, if, site aside, if the market's research, uh, comes back and points you in a direction. That eight thousand square feet is the number that people would be willing to support, and, um. And a price tag of X number of dollars, then you have a target for the architect to aim at. And, you know, as I said earlier, it's like budgeting, we can make, you know, and the architect will make that fit and make it work.
Well, what if, what if it comes back eight thousand square feet, but no more than one point five million?
Well, that, that's.
Can you do eight thousand for that?
No. No, you know.
To get private donations.
Construct, well. One point five times two, that was one of the things that I had to explain to a lot of folks, that they were saying four million dollar library, and I would say, what is your cost of it, though?
I do, you know.
So when I hear one point five, I times that by two, because I'm still gonna go into this conversation the same way I went into the other one, which is Habsys.
To get, to get, I, I, I have that, a similar problem, Owen, that I don't know. If we get, if we did a really good job of explaining that to people, or, or if we did, they don't care what the, I, I don't know if, if that's the case, if they, if. If they didn't understand that, or if they don't care about the cost.
And I think you and I had talked about it, I've talked with someone who was very concerned about the cost of a four million dollar library, and I informed them that it was two million, was their cost. And then not more than like fifteen seconds later, they again went back to four million dollar library, and I had, no, that's why we structured it this way, this is your cost.
But they're looking at what the cost per foot is, and they're dividing the four million by the nine thousand, and that's it.
I mean, I also talked to people who fully well understood that it was two million and two million, but just thought that four million was too much for it.
And I, yeah, I don't know what, I, I don't know.
But again, the market research will help us with that, I think.
I like the market research, it's changed the whole dynamic of the conversation, Ken, thank you.
All right, we're doing market research, right, is that?
We should do market research.
What should be the step, should we ask, I mean, I'm all for using Emily, you know, she, she understands the community, I mean, there, I don't know whether there are any who would think that she would have a bias, I mean, she's a professional.
She's a professional.
She would, I would think that she wouldn't.
And we vet the final language, it's not like she's gonna make it up and send it out without us looking at it.
I guess, I guess I'm asking, what's the next step, if, should we ask her for a proposal as to what she would like to do?
No, we just meet with her, she said she'd go ahead and do it, we take her word, we meet with her, we have a workshop where we, we get schooled in this. We tell her what we think would be important, she tells us whether we're right or wrong, we go back and forth, and she gets to work.
When can we do that?
Christmas Day.
Christmas Day, perfect.
I wanna stay.
Maybe New Year's Eve.
That's fine, I don't drink.
I mean, she, she can do a lot.
No.
She's gonna need to know the questions that you want answered, and from there, she can develop and frame the questions that will get you to that answer, to those answers. The, the key, critical thing is, she's gonna wanna know, what are the questions you want answered, and, you know, the, the hard question, I mean, you know. The elephant in the room is the, the site.
Well, we think it is, we're not sure.
Size, size is, well, the ele, because, you know.
That may be one of the questions we want answered, what is the elephant in the room?
And the thing is, is there's a difference between the elephant in this room.
And the elephant.
And the elephant in the town and the folks who voted.
Asian versus African.
So nineteen.
Clearly, in this room, the elephant is the site, which is understandable.
Can I just say one quick thing, the old library was thirty-three hundred square feet, functioning at sixty-six hundred square feet. So when she does that survey, people need to get informed about that, cause they're, oh, yeah, I just wanted to watch this, and it's like. Four thousand square feet, and what have we truly gained, so I don't know how you put that in the equation, but I think it's an important part of it, right?
One of the things, so I'm on the middle school visioning committee, and one of the things that we struggled with was, you know, we, we talk about trying to keep it brief. And so we don't take up too much of your time, we really struggled with how much information was too much information and how little was too little. We'll try to incorporate, cause you have to, you, you have to be very clever about, and, and it sounds bad, but. You have to be clever about how you word these things to get as much information across as you can.
That's where the professional would help, but, but there's a, a baseline, that if, if people start thinking cost compared to something that's less than what we've already had, I mean. And what we really haven't gained, so somehow there's a piece of information that needs to be part of it, I think.
So, and the other thing is, in the final documents, you just give them layers, you give them places to go when they wanna go deeper.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So nineteenth, twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second?
Oh, yeah, that's right, next week, you are in Washington, aren't you? It'll probably take a couple of meetings.
Yep.
With her.
When do you wanna start?
Would you have an objection to us starting next week? Like on the thirteenth?
I don't have any objections.
I know you don't. You what? Four, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, Wednesday, the fourteenth? Yeah, I know, you're out of town.
Oh, there is a ZB, there may be a ZB meeting here at five thirty, um, we can do it there.
This'll be a workshop, yeah, I think it's.
I'd like to be done in on, on phone, Wednesday, 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 Thursday, Wednesday. Wednesday, we're moving.
One key thing will be is if she's available.
Yeah, if she's available.
I'd, um, I'd rather Tuesday or Thursday.
Well, we've got a poverty abatement that we're meeting on at four o'clock on Tuesday, we can meet in the evening, say seven o'clock.
Evening would be good.
But you don't like that.
I'd rather, I'd rather stay away from Tuesday evening if possible. I'd rather, I, I like the idea of, of like four to six or whatever being done by dinnertime, that works for others, because it, it puts a deadline, and we're not here till all hours of the night.
We could do Thursday afternoon at four.
Yeah, I'm, I'm shooting until, um, five o'clock each night, so.
Bill, Bill, I'm, I'm sending Emily an email right now, and I'm contact, I'm copying you in the email, so she can respond back and get you, um.
Maybe if, we can find out when she's available, we could just have Stacy send out a doodle poll or something, I think, rather than trying to figure it out now.
We don't, and we don't need to do it late in the afternoon, early afternoon or evening.
Yeah.
You know, th- these are workshops.
Yeah.
Right.
We could do it Wednesday morning, I know you're working.
Well, I can, I can always, I can carve out time.
No yawning in the back. No yawning in the back.
Could you at least, could you livestream those, even though they're workshops, so that I could catch up?
I suppose you could, you know.
As, as a way of recording it.
Yeah. We'd have to have, you know, somebody to do it.
Yep.
Well, let's find out when she's available first, and then that way, if you're available to, to phone in, I think that would be easier rather than getting a technician here.
Is there anything for us to vote on?
Yeah, you should, yeah.
Yep. You sent that email out already, Rick?
I'm sending it now.
Oh, I haven't gotten anything. Okay.
So can we adjourn?
Well, then, are we?
People are getting the idea.
Are we satisfied? We, we know what we're, what we want to be doing next?
We know what the next step is.
Sure, okay.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Move second if I can. All in favor? Anyone wanna vote against? Okay, thank you all.
Three steps forward and two steps back.